So ordered, thank you so much. If we could all please rise for the pledge of allegiance, remain standing for a moment of silence. This is Rivera.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution, to the Constitution, to the Constitution, to the Constitution.
Very recently, a long time employee of the district, a long time resident of our community, Erin De Simone passed away. I know she worked at the Cook School for quite a many year and our condolences go out to her friends and family for their loss. We can have a moment of silence in her memory, please. Thank you everybody so much. Please silence your electronic devices. Motion to move the agenda to the table made by Mrs. Jersey, seconded by Mr. Groden. Any discussion? All in favor? One thing I left out that I usually say early on, I see a lot of students here. Your sheets that you need to have filled out for your government teacher, I do believe. My name is Timothy Cremley, the president of the board. I'm running the meeting. I believe that's the second line down. At the end of the meeting, any of the board members up here can sign your pieces of paper and that will be adequate for what you need to bring back to your teacher to get credit for being at this meeting. Anybody would like to make any comments or questions in the meeting for public comment? Right behind Janet there on the seat is a sign in sheet. Please sign that and we will call on you during public comment period. Thank you very much. Dr. Evans, any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. President, we have one small amendment that is per action item T 16. It should be amended to read, the board accepts the first reading and adopts parent engagement policy number 1900.
I have a motion to accept the addition made by Mr. Groden, seconded by Mrs. Greco. Any discussion? All in favor? So ordered, thank you very much, Dr. Evans. Motion to adopt the agenda as amended, made by Mrs. Rivera, seconded by Mrs. Russo. Any discussion? All in favor? So ordered. Thank you, everybody. Approval of minutes, March 16th, 2023. Motion by Mrs. Rivera, seconded by Mrs. Galligan. Any discussion? All in favor? So ordered. Thank you, everybody. Mr. Felman, time to shine.
So we have the Sakuu Dance Trip come to the district on Friday, March 24th. Also on the 24th, Assemblywoman Gunther came by and had a tour of the renovated section of our high school. On March 30th, Dr. Kirkwood came as a guest speaker. Our first day back from spring break was yesterday. The high school musical, The Little Mermaid, will be this Friday and Saturday, April 14th and 15th. Also on the 14th is the end of the third garden period. This weekend is the countywide art show. The New York State English and Social Studies Region's informational night will be tomorrow, Wednesday the 12th. The next high school KTSO meeting is also April 12th. And our last student advisor meeting with Mr. Wilder was on March 23rd where Mr. Thorsten, the new cook manager, came by with his Parsons and gave a little, and talked to us a little bit about what he plans to do for the food in the school. And if any board member ordered a shirt for the class of 2023 and didn't have it delivered to their house, I have them with me today.
Thank you very much, Mr. Felman. Any questions for Mr. Felman? Thank you very much. That moves us on to presentations. First, we have a board award. This board award is for a student athlete of ours, Alexis Heinz. Alexis recently achieved OCL champion, section nine champion, girls state giant slalom fourth place, and the cherry on top, girls state slalom champion as a sophomore in high school. Congratulations to Alexis, her family for supporting her, our teachers, coaches, and everyone else who supported her on that journey. And hopefully in the future, there will be more to come. I don't know if Mr. Jasper has any words he would like to say, but we are very proud to award Alexis with a Board of Education Award for all her accomplishments this year during the Alpine ski season. Where do I use to report? I'll put those books over on that side. Congratulations.
One, two, three. All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Heinz. Moving on to the presentation section of this evening, we have a presentation by Sullivan 180, Empowering Healthier Generation. I believe Mrs. Gore and Courtney are going to present this evening.
Where would you like us to stand?
Right up front.
And facing?
Us.
All right. Hi, everybody. I'm glad to see that there are so many students here today because what you'll learn in this presentation is that we're providing money to the school, but we want you to tell the school how to spend it. So we'll talk a little bit about that. If we could move to the next slide. My name is Megan Malali-Gore and I am the Director of Health and Wellness with Sullivan 180. Thank you very much for having us tonight. I join you with my colleague Courtney Larson and Barbara Weinstein. And Alisa Mandels is a Healthier Generation Advisor at the Cook School. So Sullivan 180 is about two years old now. The Empowering Healthier Generation is about two and a half, three years old. Sullivan 180 came about because of our county health rankings. We have consistently ranked as number 61 out of the 62 counties in New York State for the poorest health since the start of the Robert Wood Johnson Health Rankings. We just made it to the spot number 60. So it was us in the Bronx for all of those years and we just moved up one spot. As you can see from the slide, some of our health ratings are reflected here. We have the highest rate of childhood obesity in all of the Hudson Valley. We could see that Monticello's childhood obesity rate is 37.8%. This is reflecting the last county health rankings from 2019. And in New York State, excuse me, in Sullivan County, 53% of Sullivan County third graders have untreated cavities. So that's twice what New York State's average is. Next slide, please. When compared to the Hudson Valley region, Sullivan County has the highest percentage of youth receiving free and reduced lunch. We have the highest percentage of school age children and adolescents who are overweight. We have the highest percentage of youth reporting poor mental health, the highest percentage of disconnected youth. So that's youth who don't know what resources they have available to them. We have the highest percentage of emergency room visits involving opioid overdose. We have increasing rates of sexually transmitted infections. And we have the lowest level of educational attainment in the mid-Hudson region and increasing rates of suicide. We do now have the highest rate of suicide attempts in all of the Hudson Valley. Next slide, please. So our answer to this, Sullivan 180, our mission is to turn around the health of Sullivan County one degree at a time. And in order to do that, we realized very quickly that we have to start by empowering a healthier generation. So we came up with a program that's called Empowering Healthier Generation. And we know that every school district is mandated to have a wellness coordinator for the district, to have a wellness policy, and to have a wellness committee. That's per district. So we thought, where could we help? There's eight districts and BOSIs in Sullivan County, but there's 21 school buildings. We have SUNY Sullivan as part of our program, so we'll say 22. So we thought, if we stipend one person in every school building, then we will multiply the number of people working on health and wellness. So that's where we have Alisa and we have a Healthier Generation Advisor in every school building at Monticello School, including St. John Street. Next slide, please. Since the start of Empowering Healthier Generation, we've enrolled every single school district and every single school building in our program. We have visited 100% of the high school students through Salt Lunchroom visits. We've awarded over $110,000 in grant awards. We've provided over 300 mental health trainings and we've trained over 600 people in QPR, which is question, persuade, refer. It's a suicide prevention training. Next slide, please. So this is a little bit of an org chart that we have. This is located on our website and it's meant for the community to use. I told you about the wellness coordinators, which are the mandated positions. That's the highest level of the org chart. Then we have our liaison, so Courtney, our Barbo, we have Christie. They work between Sullivan 180, the school, and community resources. And then we have all of those Healthier Generation Advisors. So we stipend them $2,000 a school year to work on health and wellness initiatives and to convene a wellness committee that comes together to figure out what projects they want to work on for that school year. We bring them together every month for trainings and to share resources. And we've also convened the Healthier Generation School Resource Committee, which is made up of over 30 community resources that provide free trainings, tools, supplies to school districts. Next slide. So this is our slide with the over 30. We have all of the branches of Sullivan County Government, Catholic Charities, Cornell Cooperative Extension is a huge partner, but these are who we work with to get more resources into the school districts. Next slide, please. Healthier Generation Grants. We offer two type of grants. Next slide. The first is a Healthier Generation School Grant. This is offered annually. We offer $2,000 for your Healthier Generation Committees that are hopefully made up of staff, parents, students, to come up with ideas of how they'd like to implement change in their school. Every single building this year in Monticello but for the high school because we just changed HG Advisors and the Cook School is implementing a Healthier Generation School Grant. So we'll talk about that in a minute. Next slide. We also offer Healthier Generation Competition Grants. So Alisa Mandels is here today because your Cook School was awarded a $5,000 competition grant. We had several schools apply for this grant, five were awarded. So Cook School is currently in competition with four other school buildings to be awarded an either first place award of $75,000 or a second place award of $50,000. That a panel of judges will come to the school district. They'll look over the work that Alisa has done, which she'll share in a minute. And in September, those two awards will have the celebration and those two awards will be given. So Cook School is up for $75,000 or $50,000. Next slide, please. We also offer turtle awards every year. The turtle awards are $500 that are in each of those categories that you see up there, nutrition, physical activity, mental health, water consumption, Mother Earth collaboration. So that's collaboration with each of those community resources that we showed you. We have a Healthier Generation Committee of the Year Award and Advisor of the Year. The George Cook Elementary School, under Alisa's direction, and I know that she has Joan Mingo as her partner, they won the Healthier Generation Committee of the Year last year because of all the tremendous work that they've done. Next slide, please. Next slide. So St. John Street Community School, next slide. Here's a little bit of the work that they've done. This year with their $2,000, they purchased new yoga and fitness equipment for PE classes. The students actually voted on which equipment they would like to purchase and what activities they'd like to use it for. They participated. This picture is from MLK Day, which we hosted at the Hurleyville Performing Arts Center. We had Duncan Kirkwood as our keynote speaker. We loved him. I'm so glad that you guys brought him here. They have youth programming with Tom Baskett of Salt and they are working with the county to resurrect Bailey Commons. They're hoping to clean that up so that that could be used as an outdoor classroom. Next slide. Alisa, would you mind coming up and talking about Cook? Next slide, please.
Okay. So at the Cook School, just this year alone, we really have been focusing on staff help. And so we have implemented a bunch of different things to help our staff this year. We did chair massages, which was really wonderful for our staff in January. They had to pay a little bit in, but most of that was funded by Sullivan 180. Right now, we're in the process of doing yoga, Zumba, and meditation and mindfulness classes with the staff from the entire district because we wanted to include the entire district. And we are having people from all of the different school buildings come in. We also purchased some things like yoga blocks and we have sponsored, with the grant money, we sponsored 20 people to sign up for the tinsel trot back in December. So those people got reimbursed for what they paid in for the tinsel trot. We're also using a blender bike. The blender bike was actually, and you can see there's some pictures of blender bike up there being used, that was actually donated through Cornell Cooperative Extension. And so it's a lot of fun and it's a great alternative to cupcake kinds of celebrations. We've also got a celebration cart that we want to get rolling, no pun intended, very soon. So that's another alternative to two different celebrations for the kids. We have put stencils on the playgrounds so that the kids can do things like, you know, hopscotch and foursquare and stuff. We actually used what the foursquare as like a mood meter, which is part of our ruler program. So we've done a lot of different things to try to really improve the health of both our children and our teachers. And I'll tell you that some of the meditation and mindfulness stuff that we're doing, one of the teachers that comes all the time was doing a certain type of breathing and she's using that with her class during her morning circles. So it is really, that is definitely trickling down with our students as well. So those are some of the things that we're doing.
Thank you. So that's the project that will be in the running for that grand prize. And we have only four other school buildings that are competing for that grand prize. I neglected to say at St. John Street School, the Healthier Generation Advisor is Amanda Depew. Next slide, please. Emma Chase is Mary Ann Swenson. Next slide. The picture you see is the outdoor classroom, which we funded in the last school year. And in this school year, they're purchasing a cricket machine and they're making T-shirts for all of the kids as giveaways and prizes. They're learning how to journal and staff are now playing pickleball. Next slide, please. At Rutherford, Kaylee Bowles, she's doing tremendous work. Next slide. She has Mindset Matters. Their goal is to support the student's social emotional wellness. The continued work at KLR includes daily wellness announcements, nutrition education classes with B. Moser, who is from Snap Ed. They have Go Foods in each of the hallways. They are tracking water consumption and they just expanded their wellness committee. We presented to, they've joined the wellness committee. They just expanded their Healthier Generation Committee. We presented to faculty and at the faculty meeting, they had six signups for their committee. So that was great. Next slide. Scott Cooper. Next slide, please. So the middle school, do you want to talk about the middle school?
Sure. So Scott Cooper has implemented a Spartan Club for the middle school. It now has over 50 members and it's still growing. They are meeting weekly to train for the Spartan race at Bethel Woods. That was what Scott originally applied for our grant, but he reached out to the Spartan organization and they donated all of the free race entries, T-shirts, earbuds, and water bottles to all of the students in his club that complete his training. So then he was able to reapply for our grant and get training equipment.
Yeah. He's doing amazing.
We're just ordering his training equipment now, so they'll increase the number of ropes and blocks to do some jumping exercises. But Scott took $2,000 that we were awarding him and leveraged it for several thousand dollars that he got from Spartan. And I wouldn't be surprised if Spartan allows this to happen. In coming years, Scott also said that he wanted to challenge other school districts to come up with Spartan clubs, which would be tremendous. Next slide, please. Monticello High School. So we're here in the middle school, I know, but we have high school students. We just changed our Healthier Generation Advisor. Amanda Depew went over to St. John Street School. We now have Stephanie Byrne. So we don't have a grant going on in the high school now. We will in the new school year. It will be the $2,000 grant again, but we really need to get some buy-in for that Healthier Generation Committee. And we need to hear how students want to spend the money. So we're glad that you're all here tonight and we're hoping that as we go into the new school year, we'll be able to get that student voice. So I'm going to ask you quickly if you have any questions, but before I do that, can we hop two slides ahead to next steps? So we are here tonight because we want to make the board aware of all of the tremendous work that's going on with the Empowering Healthier Generation Program. And all of the credit goes to the Healthier Generation Advisors. They're doing a lot of work. We really, really need buy-in for those committees and for your district wellness committee. So we're calling on guardians, staff, and students to help support both of those committees. We would like you to invite your Healthier Generation Advisors to future board meetings so you could stay up on what's happening in your schools. We also need you to help share ideas because when the judges come knocking at the Cook School door to see how the wellness initiatives have been going with staff, they're also going to say, how will you spend that money should you win $75,000? So Alisa is going to be asking for ideas of how that money should be spent. We are encouraging information sharing of all health and wellness initiatives at every building, but mostly at Cook because that will be part of the judging process. And then stay tuned for Sullivan 180 team members who will be coming to a future board meeting to talk about the fit deck. That is it, unless anybody has any questions. I hope we didn't take up too much time, but thank you.
Any questions or comments for our presenters this evening?
I have a question.
Yes.
On the resource page?
Yes.
It says Planned Parenthood. What training tools and resources do they provide to districts?
So Planned Parenthood works through BOSIs and Planned Parenthood joins us on the Salt Lunchroom visits. So they come and they're a resource during lunchtime when we go into school districts.
They're also able to come in and provide trainings and help classes.
What do they come into the lunchroom for?
Well, when we, so I took out the Salt Lunchroom slide because I thought that I would go over, but we have a core team for Salt Lunchroom and that's just connecting resources directly to students. So each entity, so it would be the Planned Parenthood crew, Public House, Catholic Charities, will come and have a table and they'll have whatever resources that the school has approved. So if they have any sensitive material, we will have sent it to Dr. Evans' office ahead of time, but it might be brochures or it might be fearless does safe dating, so those type of things.
It's not every time everybody's there. They kind of rotate.
Yeah.
So a representative like Tom Baskett from Salt is always there, but it's a different agency.
Each time, yeah. And in fact, this school year, because everybody's been so busy, we haven't done a tremendous amount of, we haven't been to Monticello this year. We were there, we were in the elementary schools last year. Yep.
Ashley?
I have a question, thanks, about the children's cavities.
Yes.
I'm aware of there's a dental van that comes and takes care of kids' teeth.
Prasad. Yes. Yeah.
Do you know information on that as to why they're not covering more schools?
No, go.
Oh, okay. So I don't, I know that prasad has to, you have to reach out to prasad directly. The school district would have to reach out to prasad directly. They're located in Liberty now and they have like that RV van type thing that they're able to bring around. I also believe that they have a catchment area that Monticello is part of. So the catchment areas, obviously those areas that they're only allowed to serve. And I do believe that Monticello is in it. And we work very closely with Dr. Askara, who is the executive director. So if you reach out and you don't hear anything back, we would be happy to make a connection.
And then do you know if they just come, you know, once a year, twice a year? Or is it something that you can?
I have done the next two months or so.
They come periodically. I don't know the frequency of that, but I can give you more information. Wendy, do you have a question?
Yeah, just quickly, can you just say what Salt stands for?
Sure. Sullivan, sure. Sullivan Allies Leading Together. And Salt is a community coalition that's made up of over 54 at this point, community organizations. And they meet monthly and the meetings are open to anyone who'd like to attend. They have a virtual component or they are now meeting at Cornell Cooperative Extension.
And could you also maybe just tell some of the seniors that are here, what are some of the other senior high schools or the high schools doing with that $2,000 grant?
Sure. What are some of the other high schools doing? Livingston Manor purchased snowshoes. What else?
So Livingston Manor purchased snowshoes and an outdoor classroom kit, podcast devices. Tri Valley and Eldred are both working on updating their cafeterias to be more physically inviting and also having Cornell come in to do different trainings with the cafeteria staff. What other schools? Fallsburg, I believe is also doing staff wellness. They have a yoga instructor coming in to do weekly work with staff.
Yeah, Liberty last year, right? Last year, Liberty focused on wellness among students. So they were able to bring in, instead of going to your typical gym class, they brought in yoga instructors or?
They brought back in students who have graduated that now work in the fitness arena and did different types of exercise classes with them to broaden what the students were normally used to.
Thank you so much, Ashley.
Thank you. About the food, I know you work with Cornell, you said. Is there other organizations that focus on better food options or under your umbrella?
So Sullivan 180 is currently working on farm to school. Cornell Cooperative Extension was working on it previously. We just submitted a grant to the USDA for farm to school programs. And I do believe that our Director of Development has been in touch with all of the school superintendents. We're waiting to see how, if, I don't think we'll know until July if there's been any money released to Sullivan County. But part of Sullivan 180's mission is to help with, we've been speaking to BOSIs, but schools separately about working with food service directors and cafeteria staff to provide trainings and get hooked up with guests to come in to talk about how to make changes in all of our cafeterias.
Okay, yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Thanks so much.
No, I'm sorry. If you want to ask your question during public comment, just put your, just put your name on the list. Okay. And maybe they can be coaxed to hang out for a hot second. But if you do ask the question, we'll give a follow-up and we'll respond to your question at that. Sorry about that. Okay, so moving on in the agenda, we do have one more presentation this evening. The 2324 Budget Proposal Presentation, I believe that would be Mrs. Phelan.
Right. Yeah, so tonight, tonight, Ms. Phelan will be presenting the board with the budget that we are asking you to consider adopting that will ultimately go to the voters to their approval on May 16th. Ms. Phelan and administration has worked quite hard at putting together, we think, is a very responsible budget that allows us to continue to move the district forward on a number of fronts and the priorities that we deliver our students and community while at the same time being appreciative of the state's efforts, though we don't have a state budget yet, but we are relatively assured that we will have a significant increase in foundation aid, the full funding of foundation aid. However, as I've shared with the board previously, after next year, the state will have fulfilled its constitutional requirement and we really don't know the future of state aid after next year. So, you know, it was relatively pleasant to go through this budget process, however, with that specter and that uncertainty after next year being unknown, you know, we're very mindful of that as well. But I want to thank our administrators, our department heads, and Ms. Phelan in particular for their work in putting together this budget. Without further ado, Ms. Phelan.
Can you hear me? So this is the 2324 Budget Proposal. So just an overview of our process, we started back in November with our budget calendar. I provide a three-year average budget and expenditure comparison to each building and department so they can begin to build their budget requests for the next school year. We look at the governor's state aid proposal that comes out usually in January. March 1st, the tax levy, tax levy limit calculation. March 1st, the tax levy, tax levy limit calculation is due. So I calculate that and use that as part of the basis for the revenue. Throughout the months of February and March, we had budget request presentations to the board from all the departments in the buildings. If the state actually adopted a budget, we would be looking at the approved state aid budget, but we haven't done that yet. All indications are that school aid is not what is holding up that action up there. So we're keeping our fingers crossed that they will fully fund foundation aid. And I've also considered that the federal stimulus money that we've had for the last several years will be going away. The board's goal and the strategic plan is to meet, the financial goal of that is at least 50% of our revenue is generated from the state and to keep the tax levy as low as possible. Those are my goals when creating a budget proposal. Next slide. In early February, we presented the board an initial rollover budget, which pretty much took our current year's budget, calculated increases for contractual increases for people under collective bargaining agreements and other things that we know are going up. And that was a $96 million number. Our 2324 Budget Proposal is $97,886,695. It's an increase from the rollover of $916,000 and a $3.4 million increase over the 2223 budget or 3.62%. With inflation around 8%, I feel that the 3.62% increase is relatively low. So what's in the expenditure budget? Salaries and benefits really make up the largest portion of our budget. BOSI services come in next at $17.7 million. And then we have equipment, which is $650,000 of that is replacing school buses. We have our contractual and purchase services, supplies and materials, and then our debt service payments. Next slide is a graphic, oh, no, it's not graphic, sorry. What's included in the budget? All our current staff and our vacant positions are included in the budget. All the crests from the buildings and departments are included in this budget. We took the 1.0 full-time equivalent, language other than English teaching position funded through the ESAR grant and moved that into the general fund budget. Most retiree positions are being filled for next year with the exception of one guidance counselor due to declining enrollment. Other items that are in our budget this year are additional security measures, including metal detectors and armed security guards to supplement our current security staff. We also have additional money in the budget for athletics as far as the uniforms for a lot of the teams. And Mr. Jasper presented all of those that were pressed on there. I can go on?
Yeah.
Okay, I can, okay. The next slide is the graphic representation of the 2324 budget. And again, you can see salaries and benefits make up about 66% of the budget and BOSI's is an additional 18%. Next slide. So how do we pay for it? That's the revenue budget. And please note that the board is adopting the expenditure budget tonight. Revenues is not part of, the board adopts, but I always like to show how we're gonna pay for expenditures. As you can see, next year, the property tax levy will be the exact same as it is for the 2223 school year. So no increase there. I'm showing the reduction in other tax items. That revenue is going down basically due to pilot payments that age out over time. You see the large increase, $4.7 million in state aid. We have charges for services with a slight reduction there, $33,000. The refund of BOSI's expenditures, I'm assuming, will be around $2 million. Disbalancing expenses going down $23,000 and I anticipate not having to appropriate any fund balance to balance this year's budget, which is, which is awesome. Next slide shows the graphic representation of the revenue budget. Property taxes represent 45% and state aid is 51%. So it meets our goal in the strategic plan. I get asked this question quite a bit, the difference between the tax levy and the tax rate is, levy is the amount that we raise from taxes. It's the amount that's limited by this tax cap calculation. And the tax rate is what is determined by apportioning that levy to each town based on equalized assessed values. Equalization rate and the assessed values are not set by the district, set by your local assessor or New York State. One thing that we have, those are the two things we have no control over. The only thing we have control over is the total amount of the levy. And how the equalization rate changes. In fact, I won't go through this in detail. I'll do that more in detail at the public hearing. But if you look at this slide, you can see the assessed values stayed the same, $1 million, but the equalization rate changes. The tax levy staying the same. Each town would show a difference just by a 5% change in an equalization rate. So while we can say the levy is not going up, I can't say that your tax bill won't change. Next slide provides some historical information of the budget and the tax levy. You can see that budget's gone up 3.62% for 2324. And the tax levy, you can see. And the tax levy is the same for the last three years. And is actually levied in 1819. I know that's a lot of numbers and a lot of information, but I always look at fund balance to see how this budget would affect future years. Assuming that state aid flattens out and we have a 3% increase in state aid for the future years. And assuming similar three and a half, 3.5% expenditure increases, this budget will still generate fund balance and will put you in good position for the next several years. So even if state aid goes down or is zero, you'll be able to fund subsequent budgets through appropriating fund balance and it's really not gonna affect you fiscally. And that's the budget presentation. Any questions from the board?
Might as well start off with Helen.
Do we know what you're currently anticipating our fund balance to be for this current year to move into? The 2223?
2223?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'm assuming it'll be about 9%. I'm going to probably ask the board to appropriate some of that fund balance to the capital reserve, the existing capital reserve, to fully fund that. So it'll be around seven at the end of appropriating that excess fund balance.
And have we heard anything from the additional state mandate for the $50,000 for tutoring or anything of that nature?
No, we haven't. So what Ms. Jersey's referring to is the mandatory set aside for high-impact tutoring. Both the Senate and the Assembly had that removed from their proposals. The money was still there, but basically giving school districts the latitude to use that. For us, it's about $500,000 to use as discretionary foundation aid. So, and again, going back to Ms. Phelan's point, we don't hear that that's a holdup in the process of the state budget. Right now, it appears to be fail, reform, reform. That's, it'll be discussed and disputed at the state level.
Sorry, does your hand up?
I'm just a little confused. You say, I'm sorry. Todd was trying to help me a little. So you're saying you're not sure about the taxes? Will not, the tax bill won't change? What do you mean by that?
So the tax levy will stay the same. So I'll levy the $43 million over all the towns. But each assessor assesses property differently. New York State comes in and they assign an equalization rate. And in theory, it's supposed to even out those assessments. So $100,000 home in Fallsburg and $100,000 home in Thompson are assessed the same. When that rate changes between the towns, the amount of whole value shifts. So if the state comes in and says, okay, this year, everybody in town Fallsburg is assessed at 100%, but then next year they're at 90%, that 10% shift will move the levy, the apportionment of the levy to the different towns. And that determines the tax rate. So that's how us doing nothing at all, you know, we have?
Doesn't necessarily mean the folks in a particular township might not get higher taxes even though we never actually raised our levy. Because that's what we control, that one big number. How that big number gets dispersed, we're a little bit at the mercy of New York State and how they decide that their formula is gonna work this year. And that changes on a year-to-year basis depending on population and things of that nature. Yes, Mr. Groban?
Fund balance. We are to keep, it's advisable to keep over four but under 10, correct? Okay. And that's our comfort?
I'm comfortable between, you know, 6 to 8.
And you've heard our auditors, when they give their annual report, they love that number too.
Yeah, Chase.
4%.
Ashley?
Thank you. Slide six says, "What is included in the 202324 Budget Proposal?" The very bottom, the bullet says, "Additional security metal detectors and armed security." Where is that in the pie? Is that under equipment 1%? And then of course salaries, benefits?
A portion of it's under equipment would be the metal detectors and then a part, or portion of it for the security guards is under contractual.
Okay. And then that'll be broken up more? I mean, will we get more information on that detail or no in the future or no?
Well, the armed security services, we're looking to contract with Athlet Security Services and the quote we have would be about $60,000 per year for a full-time armed security guard. We were looking at contracting for two of them for next year, so about $120,000. The metal detectors, I think, were around $5,000.
Thank you.
Mr. Groban?
Metal detectors would go to portable as, like going to events?
Yes, so they'd be in the middle school or high school and they would be portable. They would not be permanently installed. We would develop a policy around how students would be detected for metal objects on a kind of a randomized basis. You can't kind of profile and pick. You have to set up a type of schedule where, you know, every third day, we're gonna pull every third student out of the line for detection. We could also set them up at events. So they're that level of portability.
Any other questions? Hey, Helen?
Just one last one. I just want to say thank you to Elisa because I know this is a lot of big undertaking and I just want to say thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Lisa.
Yeah, Lisa. Any other comments, questions, or concerns regarding our budget presentation? Awesome. Thank you, everybody. Thank you very much, Lisa. Moving on along the roadway, Adriana?
I would like to move, we can send it to the board F1 to M1 for approval.
I have a second on that by Ms. Rivera. Any discussion? All in favor? So ordered. Thank you very much, Adriana. Information, reports, and discussions, Board Roundtable. Adriana, would you like to start us off today?
I attended the Rutherford Science Fair a few weeks ago. It was really exciting to see the different students and their science projects. And one young student won overall on this refrigeration project, which was amazing. Y'all. It was really cool just to see students engaging in science on many different levels and hopefully that curiosity continues.
Thank you very much. Doggy?
I attended some varsity baseball games and I'm happy to say that the kids are doing, the students are doing a really good job and my hat is off to the coaches because they are doing a phenomenal job this season too. I also attended Dead on Arrival. It was up at BOSI's and I don't even know where to begin. It was a video presentation that was given about opioids in Sullivan County. Now Sullivan County was 62 on the list and maybe we're 61 out of all the counties in the state of New York for deaths and how this addiction is moving into other places. And the purpose of it is to start showing this video to educate not only the students but the parents. And I believe it's being rolled out in schools. I don't know if you've been contacted. I'm sure my superintendent has.
Yes.
But it's being implemented and I'm not sure how, what way, but it's very powerful, very educational. And it's a real eye-opener too, what you would not even realize is being slipped into candies and other things that our kids have that you wouldn't even question these days. So I'm hoping that this community group that's putting us forward really is headway through schools and the community with regard to this Dead on Arrival and the video. I believe you can also Google it and it will come up on YouTube to be seen. And I implore any parent that is here or watching tonight that they should actually take a look at that video. It's pretty amazing.
We have, by many, we have shared that link with our administrators and we're talking about ways to disseminate that effectively. Disseminate that the right way to our communities. We recognize the value of the video. It is pretty chilling, but also very informative. And we're figuring out ways to best get that out to community members and kind of non-traditional formats where, the time was, schools would maybe have a family night and show that to interested parents with low turnouts. So we're looking at how do we really just get that out to families and they're able to access it at their own, at their own pace.
Thank you very much, honey. Mr. Groban?
I had the honor and privilege of being, attending the budget committee and I am so excited to be fielding these ideas to be fiscally responsible and tracking that because I just want to see this district going in great direction. And then Ms. Alexis Heinz to be dominating in alpine skiing is amazing. I hope she makes it to JOs. I hope she makes it as another, as a fellow NISPA racer up in states. I wish her the best in going to Olympic Training Center in Lake Placid. That's it.
Ms. Russo?
I attended the Code of Conduct meeting along with Ms. Jersey and it was excellent. I learned a lot. We did receive more information afterwards, which is very enlightening. I also attended the policy meeting today prior to meeting today.
Thank you very much. Ms. Riley?
I have nothing to report. Thank you.
Ms. Rivera?
Just that I attended a policy meeting prior to our board meeting.
Policy meeting? Thank you. I would have forgotten. And then we had a building committee meeting last week? No, maybe the week before recently. And I inadvertently attended the budget committee. They were back to back. I shut up earlier than I was supposed to. But I actually really enjoyed the budget committee and I might consider doing that in the future because I feel like it was really better than I anticipated.
Ms. Jersey?
I attended the Code of Conduct meeting, like Ms. Russo said, and it was very engaging. I also attended a capital project committee meeting, which I'm excited for what's gonna come up next, hopefully shortly. And also the budget committee meeting and varsity softball game, which, oh, it was the end.
I also, budget committee, capital improvement committee. It is very nice to see the budget moving ahead. very nice to see the budget moving ahead and being put together very thoughtfully. Thank you very much. It's also going to be very nice to be able to put out the next capital improvement project, and we'll see where that goes in the future. Thank you, everybody, for spending your time and doing everything to help the board move forward. Next on the agenda is our principals' report outs. Any questions or concerns regarding the principal report outs? All right, moving on. Dr. Evans, Policy Committee memo.
Yes, you may have heard there was a Policy Committee meeting earlier this evening. So tonight, the, the board is acting on two policies. One is a second reading and adoption of the homebound instruction policy. There was some good discussion in the Policy Committee about that revised policy. So we are going to continue to look at that policy, as well as when this new, newly adopted policy goes into effect, monitoring its effectiveness and coming back and having more discussion. And then also, I've asked the board to not only approve the first reading, but also adopt policy, parent engagement policy nineteen hundred. This comes to us as a recommendation from the New York State Education Department. We had to first canvas our schools' building leadership teams or PTOs in some buildings for parent feedback. Having received that, we're now moving forward with that, and it's a, it's really just modernizing that policy nineteen hundred, so that State Ed is satisfied that we're meeting those needs as they believe them to be required by federal law. Well, that's the policy update.
Thank you. Moving right along, our capital project update. Oh, any questions regarding policy? Oh, good. All right. Sorry about that. Capital project update, Dr. Evans.
Certainly, and we did, I may, Mr. President, we do have correspondence outcomes in there from, recall, the last meeting was at Chase, and there was a community member who had some questions, and we followed up with those.
Thank you.
Yep. Capital project update. So we had an owners' meeting last Wednesday on March twenty-ninth. Tonight, the board, we're asking for the board's approval on two change orders. One is for unusable soils at the newly constructed tennis courts. You may be surprised, but we put shovel into the ground in Sullivan County and found that soil underneath was not necessarily usable to put a tennis court on top of that. So that was not in the original plans, so that had to be disposed of, and we had to put in usable soil. The other is for balancing valves. We, though there is a new heating and a whole new system in the high school, the valves and the piping for that new system were not operating up to what we needed them to, to effectively heat the new wing of the high school. So over spring break, we switched off the heat, they installed new valves, and we believe that that has since been corrected. That, too, was not in the original plans for the heating and ventilation. On another front, we're asking the board to approve confirmation of prior SECR determination and approval of use of ARP-ESR funds. So there's a lot of acronyms in there. SECR is basically an environmental impact statement or study for a project that the board has already approved. However, it never did this official capital project approval resolution. So this is to use our federal relief monies for the heating and ventilation improvements at Chase, Rutherford, and Cook. So you may recall that we're using those federal relief monies to put in new air exchanges and heating systems in some nineteen fifty-nine era classrooms. Many of those classrooms that have very, very little ventilation, other than windows and been too heating. So by using these federal funds, we'd be able to do that. However, in order to move the approval process forward at State Ed, they are asking for this document. So it has come through our architect, and they believe that this would satisfy the state's queries about moving that project forward for us. Just a reminder, those federal relief funds dry up. ESR ends the end of September of this year. ARP ends the end of September of twenty twenty-four. So we've already earmarked monies in those, for those capital improvements. And then lastly, for capital project update, you also heard that there was a capital project committee meeting where we reviewed RFPs from five different architecture firms. I believe the committee wanted to invite two of those firms back for interviews. So I guess while we're all here, I'd like to kind of hear when you, we want to do them in one evening.
Yeah.
Do you guys have some preferred evenings for me to reach out to them and schedule?
Well, now that budget is kind of concluded, we shouldn't really have any more budget presentations in the near future, sooner than later. Okay? So I would say the first meeting that's available, that they could both make themselves available to us.
So do you want them to present to the whole board, or do you want to have an interview with just the capital project committee?
That would be me, Helen, Jen, and Todd. Do you feel that we should do it in front of a whole board or just as a committee? We have it down to two.
I think the whole board, that way we can move on with it.
I'm comfortable with that.
I mean, that's kind of me. I don't think that the whole board needs to, but.
No, but if any questions did arise, they could kind of be dealt with at that time, and then we could move forward a little bit quickly.
Yeah. So here's the thing about those interviews, is that they.
I'm looking less as an interview and more as a presentation, and then we can ask the questions that we'd like to ask.
Right. So I guess just maybe we come up. Okay, that's fine.
If anything, maybe there should just be a small protocol that if Group A is presenting, maybe Group B could wait outside, so they don't have an extra ten minutes to think about the answers.
Sure.
You know what I'm saying?
It is a public meeting. That's the only, I get what you're saying, but you can't really, you can't really bar people from entering a public meeting either.
This is true. If you have them draw straws and somebody gets to go first and somebody gets to go second, you know, we could do that, but that's unreasonable. If you do have, the alternative is if you do have the committee with interviews, you could kind of schedule that and say, you know, arrive at six P M., arrive at six thirty P M. or whatever.
Anyone on the board that wanted to come at that point could.
Correct. But whatever the pleasure of the board is. All right. We value the vote. And?
I'm with the committee, but I, you know, I think the committee should interview and provide a recommendation.
And then have them, and then that's just who this.
And then that's just who this is.
That's. I'm totally fine with that. It was a matter, it's just that we have, the sentiment here right now is that it's, we, people want all of it together, but then again, we're on the committee to do a job, and we're doing it and trying to save time and not cut corners and really hash it out, and that's why we're on the committee, so.
So.
I'm, I'm with the committee, and I'm not.
So policy typically meets at the first meeting of the month? So either the next meeting or the next second meeting of the month, if we schedule days six o'clock? No, five thirty.
Maybe.
Five thirty committee meeting, that would give each entity approximately a half hour to pitch, to lead their, lead their case.
So I'm looking at five thirty on April twenty-fifth?
You got twenty, twenty-nine seconds to check your phone.
It's just.
What?
What day was that?
Tuesday, April twenty-fifth.
Tuesday, April twenty-fifth. Go for me. Are you up there then, Alan?
There's no committees on that night, right, Janet?
No, yeah, scheduled.
And look, this might, this might be contingent of how they're available as well, right? So.
Lieutenant, so right now, we're looking okay? All right. So why don't we try for that, and then if one of them have an issue, we'll give me a holler and we'll figure it out.
Okay. So it's basically capital project committee meeting at five thirty, you know, on April twenty-fifth.
You got it.
That's all that I have on capital project update. Any questions?
Todd.
Punch list in the F and C room. I know it was promised that these doors were going to get replaced, or was it kicked in when they installed them?
Yes.
Are they? This is, this is a punch list item, correct?
Yeah, they were going to replace those. I need to follow up and see. That's on the, I provided you with a.
Figure the panels on the outside of high school again, other panels can get on the inside.
One thing.
I'm just trying to do it in tandem.
They are different vendors, and it has been a little bit more, it's been a little bit tougher to get people back in, but we have been persistent with them. According to the last meeting.
While you're looking, have they been paid in full for that install?
No, because there is a, what do we call that? Retainer.
So we.
So there is an X, X percent that we, we've been holding back. I'm just trying to look this up. It's in the list.
I know, Chris, you promised it, but. Like I said, that is a punch list item, correct?
Yeah, it's on the update. I'm just trying to look at it. It, it's in your board docs.
I didn't know if it fell under K I or if it fell under C P L or if it fell under.
It's S and L.
S and L.
Currently on.
Delivered and scheduled.
So I'll follow up with Steve Lewis.
Victoria, you have a question?
Do we know if the heating is working now?
This week has not been good to test that.
Next week will probably be a little more conducive. It's going to be warmer, but it's also going to be rainy most of the week. So the, with the extra humidity in the air, it'll probably be a better test next week.
And we do have an owners' committee meeting tomorrow. So, you know, these questions, we'll raise these questions.
My next question is, if we weren't able to test it, because it's so warm out, we have a warranty on this?
Well, they can test the water temperature. They can run the system and test the water temperature.
Okay. And what about the dishwashers for the whole macro? Have they been reinstated?
That's what Todd said. That's what I understood. The strategy. Well, the front panels, front panels. It is.
Do we have an update on the tennis courts? Because no one's out there. Okay.
Later in the spring. But again, we have an owners' meeting tomorrow, and we'll get nothing done.
Thank you.
One more question. What's going on with the fiber out at the bus garage? So.
I believe where it enters into the science wing on the backside of the building, and a pole was.
There was an accident in the bus parking lot that knocked over one of the fixtures where they plug in the buses, and that pulled the fiber line and caused damage to it. So it's an insurance question.
Um, one question I have, did they give supporting documentation on one change order for today with the unusable soil for the tennis courts?
So according to Steve Lewis, yes.
They gave documentation.
I don't know about documentation, but I can, I asked him, was this, is this change order good to go? Was this indeed unusable soils? He said, yes, it was, and the change order is good.
We don't have that documentation?
There was dirt that was pulled out that was not usable. We could hold up if you want, we can pull this back and say, you know.
I kind of want to just, I want to confirm that we have the documentation.
Okay.
So when we get to the third, it could be.
Action.
Is there any way to amend it to the fact that it's pending when that is submitted, so that it's open to play?
I'd rather just hold it.
Be better.
Before we get to action. Any other questions regarding capital project improve, capital project update?
All right, there, just, I may, there is an explanation memo in there with the change order. We don't know if that is. Enough? Is enough for what we believe.
The location of what? Under that?
Fifteen.
Fifteen. Sorry, I just logged myself out.
So it's from our, it's from LaChase. Yeah, it's under T.
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
Sorry, I closed board out.
It's a memo from LaChase to Chris Lade regarding this change order.
It's big.
It's, it doesn't have anything detailed, like you're looking for for documents.
This is just a. Well, this is, historically, this is the documentation that the board receives on change orders.
Talking about.
No, yes. Page two.
Thirteen page two. Bless you.
I thought it was contamined.
No, no.
It basically had no compaction.
That works.
Yeah. Can't make one foot of soil into six inches of soil, so therefore they have to get different soil. So they basically changed it to stone. All right, I'm fine with that. All right. Any other questions? I'm fine with that. We can keep that change order on my end. Any other questions regarding capital project? All right. I'm moving on. All right, just finding my place. Upcoming events. Um, listed in the agenda is upcoming events. There's a few that are actually today. What does anybody would like to know? Notable is our budget vote and election on May sixteenth. Please go out and vote. Community events. I got a self-serving shout-out to troop one oh one in Rock Hill. They're having a spaghetti dinner this Saturday. Please come out and support the boys and helps them fundraise to go camping, to go to summer camp and things of that nature. Liamada's article in The Democrat is very, very nice. That is a good read, and there's a lot of other stuff in there, so please read through it, find something you like and attend. That would be fantastic. Anybody wants Rappel tickets for this spaghetti dinner? I got some up here. I'm just saying. Any other community events we'd like mentioned? All right, moving on. Questions and comments from the public. Janet, do we have any takers?
There's somebody on here. It looks like Colin. I can't read the last name.
Oh, yeah, that was me.
That was you? Still, still want to make your statement?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, hold on.
Colin, what's your last name? C A N T O?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I just have to do my thirty seconds of stuff here. Bear with me. Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and matters of public interest. In order to permit the fair and orderly expression of public comment, the following rules shall govern and be administered by the presiding officer. Please note, the first public comment period of forty-five minutes maximum duration will be at the beginning of the meeting and a period of fifteen minutes maximum at the end of the meeting. Either period may be extended by a majority vote of the board. Either public comment period is a time for public discussion. If necessary, the community member will be contacted for follow-up. If you wish to speak, place your name, email, and/or address and telephone number on the sign-in list indicating the topic of your comments. Prior to making your comment, state your name for the record. Identify any group or organization you represent. Comments are limited to three minutes or less per speaker. A speaker may not yield his or her time to another speaker in order to extend the time for comment. No speaker may comment on or identify any particular student or employee by name, position, or situation in his or her comments. All comments are to be directed to the board president or designated. Andoutsend or petitions are to be given only to the board president for distribution to the board. The board will receive and consider all written comments. A memo will be placed on the agenda on the next meeting under information, reports, and discussions to keep the board informed of the outcomes. It will be titled correspondence outcomes and will be a public document. There you go. You can do your thing. Please stand up, state your name, and.
Hello, my name is Colin Kanto. My question was actually for the woman who was presenting about Sullivan one eighty, so I guess I wouldn't be able to ask that or ask.
Okay.
Mrs. Weinstein would love to answer it.
Thank you.
Okay. So my question was, did you guys have any goals, numbers, I guess, in this scenario that you'd like to, or decrease in the situation by implementing these certain plans or ideas, whether it was the change in gym or the lunchroom itself?
Directly or no?
We're in a wishy-washy situation here. I appreciate. We're in a wishy-washy situation here. I appreciate you wanting.
No, no, after we've done with the session.
Yeah, when we're finished up with, uh, the meeting, please feel free to get the answer that you're looking for. And if you could relay to myself or Dr. Evans the answer, we'll include that in correspondence, so everybody can hear what that, uh, answer was to the young man's question.
Thank you.
So should I answer you?
No.
Or later date share this with you?
Yeah, just email me.
Okay.
And if you can't find my school one, find my work one. You have it.
Yes.
Any other people sign up for public comment?
No, that's it.
Thank you very much. Um, Dr. Evans, superintendent update and information?
Thank you, Mr. Crumley. So, uh, a number of updates for the board. Uh, at the last board meeting, there were some questions about, um, some different, uh, books that were being used for professional development. Uh, Ms. Whaley Williams provided a very detailed, uh, report on what those two different, uh, books were being used for, why they were selected and so on. I believe you've been given copies of textured teaching. And I believe that we have street data on order. Uh, so, uh, there'll be more there for you. Uh, should you not want to read those books, uh, again, Ms. Whaley Williams has provided a very, uh, reader-friendly summary of what each of those are used for and why they were selected. Uh, we're in the, uh, the early stages of our personnel searches for next year's staff. Uh, next week, Ms. Carlin and I will be getting, begin screening interviews for applicants for the two principal vacancies. Uh, and again, we're gonna follow a similar, uh, protocol as what we do with most of our administrative positions. Uh, we do a screening interview. We send a number of potential, uh, qualified applicants to, uh, committees. Uh, and then those committees make a recommendation back to us and, uh, Ms. Carlin, Ms. Phelan and I do a final interview with, in this case, it'd be two, uh, principal candidates. Uh, we are looking to form a stakeholder committee from Rutherford, a separate stakeholder committee from, uh, Kaiser Middle School. If you are interested in serving on either of those, uh, just please shoot me an email, uh, and then we'll put it together from there. Okay, so if you can get that to me by the end of the week, if you're interested. For teaching vacancies, um, we've, uh, attended a number of recruitment fairs, uh, some of these virtual, some of these in person. Uh, we, uh, have, uh, through the work of our HR department and this Bonfante, we produced a very, uh, marketable brochure on why people would wanna teach in our district. Uh, we're also expanding our reach through online systems like Handshake, uh, which we're finding a lot of, uh, colleges use now as their kind of career placement office. Uh, so we're extending our reach there. Um, it is early. We're getting some good applicants and, uh, we hope to have these positions filled by summer. Uh, this month, uh, I'm meeting again with, uh, different student roundtables, uh, tomorrow. I'll be meeting with a middle school roundtable and next week, a high school student roundtable on extracurricular offerings. I've also provided the board with, uh, the, uh, results from the March student roundtables on student social emotional health. Um, and later this week, I will have the first of my spring, kind of another cup of coffee session, but they're rebranded as afternoon teas. Uh, Thursday, I will be at the Rutherford Elementary School beginning at two fifteen. Friday, I'll be at RJK, uh, beginning at one fifteen. That's open to any interested parent, guardian, caregiver, or staff member, uh, to come chat with me at that, at those times. Tomorrow, and I wanna express my appreciation for Sullivan 180 on, uh, all of the things they do to improve the health and wellness of our community. Uh, tomorrow, I'll be attending a professional, uh, development webinar sponsored by Sullivan 180 on sexual orientation, gender identity, and gender expression. Uh, I think everyone realizes that norms, issues, questions around these topics are ever evolving. And we wanna make sure that we are current on, uh, best practices and what the state education department expects of school districts. Uh, so we look to this webinar as a potential resource, uh, to help inform our practices. Uh, and I've extended that to any interested administrators to attend as well. And then lastly, uh, last week, and the board will be recognizing them tonight, was National Assistant Principals Week. So I want to publicly recognize the work of our assistant principals, Ms. Boardman, Dr. Doyle, Ms. Kozachuk, Ms. Moots, Mr. Murphy, Ms. Romano, who's been filling in as an interim, and Ms. Serrano for their hard work and dedication to our students and our staff. I, I did get out to see a softball game last week and, uh, Gianna Demeo launched one. Uh, it was a tape measure home run. Unfortunately, we didn't prevail, but it was a really exciting game and the weather's been great and the fields look great as well, so. Uh, well done to, uh, Mr. Jasper and the teams and our grounds crew and the players.
Thank you very much, Dr. Evans. Um, oh, I'm sorry. Any questions for Dr. Evans?
Yes, I do. So I see that you're attending this, um, training with Sullivan 180, so I clicked on the link there and the district tells me that my, um, the URL category is what is restricted due to crime and terrorism globally. Yeah, if you clicked on, I'm just curious if you're attending a training like that, how come we're blocked in this school? What's that you see?
I, I have, I've been able to access that website. You're talking about the, the Hightops group who's organizing it? So that's the, that's their homepage. You had to register with Sullivan 180 and they gave you a, uh, a link. Okay, I don't know if it's because it's wifi, but.
That one of the schools, it, it won't get on without there's like a firewall or something. But if you go on with your own, login on your own stuff, it'll go.
There's the security settings on the computer, so you can't just Google or click and just.
So I think it depends on your, cause I, I can access it.
We have different settings.
It's hightops.org.
Any other questions for Dr. Evans?
Not a question. I just had a compliment of, uh, I know of a Monti graduate, graduated like two years ago, who gave a presentation to the superintendents about universal healthcare in their CTEC program. And this former Monti student is now selected as a prefector to teach as a junior this year. So, CTEC program and what we do, I'm, I'm highly behind it as far as giving opportunities for students that are coming up.
I'll pass that on to Dr. DeFour and a reminder that Sullivan Bozies will be hosting their annual meeting Thursday night. Over.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? All right, moving on. Lisa, you're good?
I'm, I'm good.
All right, and in lieu of, this is Carlin. In lieu of Mrs. Carlin tonight, we have, once again, Dr. Evans.
Thank you, Mr. Crumley. So some different things that the board will be acting on tonight. Uh, these are from Ms. Carlin. There's some deep commissioning of excess books at the high school. These are books that are in poor condition even after being rebound, fixed, and so on, and that is the only reason that they're being removed. Uh, there is a contract for, uh, a local group, People in Mind of New York. Uh, this group will be working with our homeless and temporarily housed students through the McKinney Vento Grant to provide those students with opportunities such as college visits and other opportunities, uh, for, uh, career and college readiness and life after high school. Uh, the board will also be acting on a contract with Education Analytics. This group provides us with our student learning objective, uh, calculations that are required for teacher annual professional performance review plans. So they basically take the NWA test data and calculate that into a system that will spit out the zero to twenty score for teachers as part of their APBR. Uh, so that's why we work with that group. Uh, there's also a contract for, uh, the restorative group, uh, which is, uh, with Nathan Maynard. Uh, we had Mr. Maynard to speak as the keynote to kick off the school year. Um, and, uh, we were looking to reach an agreement with them to provide, uh, professional development support and embedded support for our code of conduct committee when they're looking at, uh, the data, uh, that they're looking at to help revise the code of conduct and also expand our restorative practices. Uh, so they, they are facilitating the next two meetings, April eighteenth and May eighteenth. Uh, and they are basically making recommendations. That cost will be covered through the Title I School Improvement Grant. We, uh, shared the books. Uh, street data is, they're on order. Uh, the Equity Task Force is reconvening. That is consistent with our belonging equity, diversity, and representation policy. Uh, now that our Director of Student Equity has kind of been able to sort out her work, uh, she is, uh, reconvening that committee. That committee, that committee organized a few years back and it did contain, I believe, two Board of Education members, if I recall. Uh, and when we typically do mixed committees where there's Board of Ed members and staff and, uh, other community members and students, we typically have two board members. So Ms. Carlin is, uh, curious to see if any, uh, two board members would be interested. Meetings will be monthly. The times will be determined. Most likely, they'll be in the afternoon. Presently, there is a meeting scheduled for April twentieth and then May eleventh, just to kind of get the committee back up and running and establish some norms. And then, uh, the committee will resume in August or September. If you have any questions on that, uh, please contact, uh, Ms. Whaley Williams or Ms. Carlin. However, since we're all here now, it's, you know, we can figure out if there are two board members who are interested.
So I have, uh, this is Russo and this is Riley. And the time's not firm yet.
No, but it's.
It's the twentieth though.
It is the twentieth. That time is not firm.
Never be in the afternoon, most likely.
They'd be in the afternoons. They'd probably be virtual. Don't hold it to it, but that, that's the way they were, but that's during COVID.
I would be interested, but it is gonna determine how, like, the medium that it's done all the time, but I'd be interested to learn more.
So we definitely have up to four people. Um, so time and media would, have the medium of the actual media, uh, meeting, I think, would come into play. Do we know when that's gonna firm up maybe a little bit?
And code of conduct meeting is usually one thirty, two thirty.
I do not have it down on my calendar. I have meeting. But what we can do is, even if it is in person, we can make a, you know, kind of a remote offering, you know? Remote availability for it.
As of right now, Linka, Adriana, Vicki, and Ashley would all be interested in attending the Equity Committee on the twentieth and then the eleventh, as of right now. Or is doable?
Yeah, I would.
That would be one of them.
So Vicki, Ashley, Adriana, I'd like to.
And chances are good that at least one of you won't be able to make it. Just because that's the way life usually crumbles the cookie. All right, so we're good on that?
Yep, and one last contract that's not listed here, but, uh, we are asking you to approve the contract for Duncan Kirkwood's visit. Um, there was kind of some back and forth on his contract and unfortunately we couldn't get it to you guys prior to his presentation. However, that is being funded through the School Violence Prevention Grant. Uh, we heard many good things about it and I, you know, let's go ahead. We have him on the calendar.
You got the Josh ship?
Yes.
I do have a question about the education analytical contract. In the contract, there's no period listed on the contract and it says must commit by ten thirty, one twenty-two, but we already commit and then we know the period.
These are typically year-to-year. And there was a, I believe, in the fall, we signed up for their services. They did not get a response rate in New York State that would have been economically feasible to them. We and other districts appealed to them and said, we need you, cause otherwise we're gonna not be able to do this. And then my understanding is in early February or so, they agreed to, okay, well, we'll open it up one more time for people to sign up. But I think the October thirty-first date is probably, that's what they originally put out. Um, and these are typically annual, um, agreements.
Okay. I just don't know how we're gonna approve the contract. There's no period in the contract.
In the statement of work, it says, uh, twenty twenty-two to twenty-three school year in exhibit A.
On a term on a contract, you can't find a contract for that term.
This was reviewed by our attorneys, correct?
Colin is correct. Yeah, I mean.
So, um. So we'll bring this back to ed analytics. While we send that back to them. You are, I guess, good with the rates and everything else in there.
Yeah, it was just, I didn't have a problem. Enter date, period date.
Well, typically, we do enter the, you know, the top one, but it's the one hundred eighty.
That's T ten? Any other questions, comments, concerns regarding the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum stuff?
Uh, I don't, it's not part of that, but it's T six, so I'm not sure if I should bring up that, but it's approval of Go Beyond Greatness. So I'm not really sure why that wasn't up in curriculum, but I could just talk about it when it comes to action items. Does that sound okay?
Any other questions regarding, uh, the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum update?
So the one that we were just talking about, the, the date in there was October. There's one here that doesn't have any date in here.
Which?
Your starting group agree? This is this agreement entered into this by blank date of twenty twenty-three. It doesn't give a date in here. That should be for a period of, the other one had a date in October twenty twenty-two. This one has no date.
But it's that period of, is that what the other contract?
The other contract.
Educational analytics, I didn't look at.
Yeah, that's what I'm, okay.
You had analytics.
Analytics, that's what I'm looking at. The other one had October twenty twenty-two.
In the body of it, it said you had to commit by October twenty twenty-two.
Okay, so the analytic one is one more set back.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
We're good? Mr. Grove?
I just had one question for thinking of dates. I was also thinking of time and that it was this time when we usually cut our students loose.
No, it's not thirty. I usually cut them loose.
All right. Just checking.
Twenty-three minutes.
I can do it.
All right.
Okay.
No other questions regarding Assistant Superintendent of Instruction Curriculum? All right, fantastic. So that brings me to Adriana.
Do I need to start right officially table one?
Surely.
So we're kind of like promotion to move, uh, take action items T ten and table it to our next meeting.
Second. Named by Mrs. Rivera. Any discussion? All in favor? So order. Adriana?
Thanks. Um, I'd like to move action items T one to T nine and T eleven to T seventeen, um, for as a slate for consideration.
Second, named by Mrs. Galligan. Any discussion? Nope, that's the next one. All in favor? So order. Adriana?
I do the group.
Okay. Discussion?
Okay, I'd like to discuss T six, which is the Go Beyond Greatness consultant agreement. I'm aware of the, a little bit aware of the program on the middle school level. And the literature that I saw of last year, maybe it was the year before, um, I thought was very, um, leaning politically towards, uh, one way and not neutral.
I thought was very leaning politically towards one way and not neutral. So, for example, the content picked out, I'm not sure if I can say her politician name, but AOC, Alexandria Ocasio-Cortez, thank you. It pulled her out as like a featured model politician, no other politician. So, for example, and then also an artist, I believe they chose Lady Gaga. So I'm just putting it out there that if I, if we could have something, I realize it's in Kingston, it's local, and I would love to support local, just from what I look at it and what I've read. I don't know, I would be opposed to this point, to saying that I would go through and approve of Go Beyond Greatness. I'd like to know what else is out there. I'd like to know if we're going to use them. Could we, we be assured that whatever counselors using this, they would, they would make it more neutral, especially politically?
Would you like to pull that out and vote on that separately?
Yes, please.
Would you like, sorry, Victoria?
I just, I don't have a copy of that, but I do remember exactly what you're talking about. It listed people that you look up to, and I remember it saying, AOC, a socialist Democrat. It listed Lady Gaga, I don't have it with me, believe it or not. It was very, it should be, present one side, present the other side. Not just me and one side. And I have it at home, I can bring it next time if you guys would like to see it.
Well, I think in general, I would like to see that, and just see what exactly was shared.
I believe that, where does this go, come from, this Go Beyond Greatness? Was this part of the...
I remember it being for students that were either volunteering or asked to be in a leadership committee.
And then they had to pick what politician or someone they look up to, and only gave AOC as one of them. I remember that.
I don't, I don't remember the, I don't know the program's details at that level. I can tell you that this group has worked with various school districts in the region to try to inspire at-risk students, students of color, students who historically might be underserved and not on the college track, and exposing them to college and other career aspirations. So, you know, I know of their work in general terms, I do not know of detailed materials that were distributed or the context in which they were used.
Or, did you have something?
Well, what's on here looks like something for college applications and to help students with their essays and ASVAB and things of that nature. Is that the same thing that we're talking about?
No.
In regards to, because what this is right here is for that, is tonight.
It was the whole entire program. It's actually a 10-week program. And actually, one of the students I knew to partner this was definitely not a child at risk or anything like that.
Well, that's typically who they're geared towards, but they don't exclude anybody who might sign up or recommended by a counselor or a teacher.
Yeah, I have, I have all of it at home, I don't have it.
I will say, barring that, I thought it was great material. I just, I'm apprehensive not knowing going forward what I would be approving because of what I saw in the past.
And it's just already taken place, because it says 22 to 23, so have we...
No, not, not to my knowledge. And they have, but I don't know, like...
It did take place, it was, I believe, 7th grade it took place? Well, yeah, it was last school year that that took place.
What about your contract tonight, this year?
The 22 to 23.
June upcoming, three, okay.
Have they already done the work, or is it something that's going to, the date for next year?
Would we like to...
I need to amend to make it up to a more informed position to make that decision for next meeting.
Well, I can certainly find out, you know, the level, the amount of work that's been done and clarify. You know, I glanced at it, I was reading April 23 and June 23, but clearly it's April 22. It's usually on later. Verify that, you know, how much of this work has been done to this point. If the board, if board members want to share particular pieces of information, I would suggest you share that with the whole board, not just me, but I, you know, I'm not familiar with the documents you're speaking of.
I actually have it, I'll scan it and send it tonight to everybody.
Thank you.
So would everybody feel more comfortable if we tabled this until the next meeting when we had more information on it? I think I have general thumbs up around the table. But for the good of the order, we will table... That would be T6. So would you like to amend your previous, well, no, that was just for discussion.
I have, I have something else to discuss before we get too far down the chart. So the Healthy Kids Amendment? It looks like we're being compensated by the state for $133 per student per month. And then there's, you know, there's, so there's a lot of stuff in here. So basically, now we're paying the partnering agency $246 per student per month, which is going to cost us more money than what we're getting from the state. But they agreed to that original, so tell me the story here, because this is...
Start off, and I'll turn it over to Lisa, but all of this is being funded through federal relief monies as part of COVID.
Okay.
So there's no general funding that here. In terms of the rate changes, Ms. Bailey?
The initial Healthy Kids contract, there was a subsidy involved, from the county. And they were billing us, and things were getting paid all along this year. And then the purchase order, you didn't have enough money to pay the remainder of the school year, so we started asking questions and found out that the state came in and said that the subsidy was, had to change, like that they couldn't, it was a sliding scale of some kind. So then, because they told us they said, "February, we've already paid all year long." So it was, federal relief money's going to pick up the balance of it, but that's how we discovered it. That there was an error in that original contract that had...
I guess, so the original rate should have been higher?
Yeah, because the subsidy was...
That was not, yeah, that was not our understanding at the time, nor, nor Healthy Kids. Correct.
Right, and so what's going to happen next year, when the rates are probably going to be higher and we're not going to have any more COVID relief fund?
That's an outstanding question, because we're also not going to have Empire State after-school response.
Oh, so...
So what we've asked Ms. Taylor to review is potential self-paying options for latchkey services. So before school or after school, other school districts do that, where, you know, if it's just latchkey services, meaning early drop-off, late pickup, no extracurricular component, no academic component, that there be some way of doing that that's hopefully cost-effective for our parents and caregivers.
Well, I mean, so that's basically what's going to happen, is next year, there's not going to be free before-after care.
Right.
It's going to, if anything, it's going to be a paid situation.
We're trying to find funding streams to help that, but, you know, it's problematic.
Right.
Are any of the families aware of this? Have they been told yet?
Not yet, but that is something we're working on. We'd like to have some alternative out there for them to that effect. I have shared it with our local politicians about this Empire State after-school program expiring, and that historically has been used to fund before and after-school childcare. But without that, we can't, we can't go forward with our own program.
I know that New York State has hired the, I think it's the costs to cover daycare. I don't know the exact amounts, I just remember reading that somewhere. So I'm sure some of our families would qualify for that, and childcare councils, that would be an option.
But it depends also on what their rates are going to be.
It also says in here that, in addition, $40 per student per month, the subsidy is provided directly to the parents. So are they getting subsidy, or they're supposed to pay it to us? Paying healthy kids, okay.
Any other questions regarding items on the, on the document at the present moment? All right. So I think Adriana needs to amend her motion removing T10 and T6. We already removed T10, you're correct.
So, a motion to move T10 to be tabled to the next meeting, or T6, excuse me.
移到the next meeting, seconded by Mr. Groden, any discussion? All in favor? So ordered. Your next motion?
Motion to move T1 to T5, T7 to T9, and T11 to T17, for approval, template.
Do we have a second on that, made by Mrs. Jersey, any discussion? All in favor? So ordered. Mrs. Greco?
I have a motion of T18 for roll call vote.
We have a second on that, made by Mrs. Rivera, any discussion? All in favor, oh, sorry, who's calling it out? Janet, roll call vote?
I'm who was the second, sorry?
Oh, you're good.
Who was the second?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Rivera.
All right. Okay, Mr. Crumley?
Aye.
Ms. Gallagher?
Aye.
Ms. Greco?
Aye.
Mr. Groden?
Aye.
Ms. Holmes?
Aye.
Ms. Jersey?
Aye.
Ms. LaRusso?
Aye.
Ms. Rivera?
Aye.
Ms. Riley?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Janet, thank you, Adriana. Moving on, closing of the meeting, correspondence. None listed presently in the agenda. Do we have any questions or comments from the public?
No, no more.
Very well, and we then have adjournment. Motion by Mr. Groden, seconded by Mrs. Gallagher, any discussion? All in favor? Anybody who needs their sheet signed off, any board member can sign your sheets. 9:22.